Good evening, everyone. We have a nice crowd today. Trust your day is one as well as mine, and we'll entertain a motion to reconvene back from executive session. Mr. Chastain, I see a motion. Mr. Sweeney is second. All those in favor? I'm showing seven. Seven in favor, none against. The invocation and pledge of allegiance, Mr. Sweeney, if you would lead us in that, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This time of year, it's always just a wonderful thing because we've got a little bit more than a month into school, and we, I just really want to recognize all the teachers, because they are the ones on the front lines who are busting it and delivering fantastic education to our children. And I grabbed a couple of quotes, and one of the reasons I grabbed these is, first of all, is that the teachers that I had growing up were incredibly memorable. I remember the great ones, I also remember the bad ones. There's a lot of other teachers in between. But the one thing, and I've mentioned this at some of the leadership kickoff meetings, is that every teacher has a duty to inspire children, and it's the inspirational teachers that I think everybody remembers. William Arthur Ward had this to say, says, "The mediocre teacher tells, the good teacher explains, the superior teacher demonstrates, the great teacher inspires." And I think that's very true. John Tracy Kidder is a Pulitzer Prize-winning American writer of nonfiction books, and he went on to say that "Most teachers have little control over school policy or curriculum or choice of text or special placement of students, but most have a great deal of autonomy inside the classroom. To a degree shared by only a few other occupations such as police work, public education rests precariously on the skill and virtue of the people at the bottom of the institutional pyramid." They may be at the bottom of the institutional pyramid, but in my mind, they're at the top. And if you would please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. Next, we'll have board recognitions. Mr. Ragsdale.
Sir, Mr. Chair, members of the board, ask Dr. Angela Huff to come forward, and if the board will come in front of the desk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Superintendent Ragsdale. Angela Burage, target teacher at Norton Park Elementary, has been honored with the Javits-Frazier Scholarship for Diverse Talent Development. This is a national award presented by the National Association for Gifted Children. The scholarship seeks to increase diverse students' access to talent development opportunities through teacher and school counselor psychologist training and support related to equity and excellence in gifted education. Norton Park Principal Jeff Mosley says Burage is an amazing teacher leader. She continues to build our gifted learning program and to enrich the lives of all of our students. He also says that she helps children to see what they're learning in new ways and how that learning applies to their lives outside of the classroom. At this time, I'd like to invite Angela Burage and Principal Jeff Mosley to join us in the front of the room to be congratulated by the board and the superintendent. Willer High School Counselor Sumana Loud Gull has been selected for the 2015 Yale Educator Award. This award is sponsored by Yale University's Office of Undergraduate Admissions. The award recognizes educators from around the world who inspire and support their students to perform at high levels and to achieve excellence. Students entering the Yale class of 2019 were selected to nominate outstanding educators who have deeply impacted their lives. Loud Gull was nominated for the award by Matthew Coffin, the salutatorian for the class of 2015. A committee in the Office of Undergraduate Admissions then selected her as the overall winner. So at this time, I would like to invite Sumana Loud Gull and Assistant Principal Tiffany Stark to join us in the front of the room to be congratulated by the board and the superintendent. October 5th marks the beginning of Cobb County Public Safety Appreciation Week. In anticipation of that week, we would like to take a moment to express our heartfelt thanks and pay tribute to all of our public safety personnel for their selfless commitment to protecting our students, staff, and schools. At this time, I'd like to invite Chief Ron Story, Captain Wayne Pickett, Sergeant Mike Wilson, Sergeant Mike Young, and the officers on duty with us tonight, Bill Cardone, Tim Jennings, and Danny Hubbard, to join us at the front of the room, and if I left anyone else out, come on up anyway, to be honored as a part of the Cobb County Public Safety
All right, everyone ready? All right. One, two, three. Ms. Thayer, I can't see you back there. Would you like to scoot around a little?
I'm not squatting down.
There you go. All right. Here we go, one more time. That's perfect. One, two, three.
Congratulations to all. This concludes our recognitions for this evening.
Next, we'll have public comment, but I'm going to take just a bit of personal privilege to recognize a distinguished guest tonight, Mayor Tommy Allagood of Acworth. If you would just stand briefly, Mayor, so they can see you. He'll be speaking at the end of public comment, and he and his guests, they have a great story to tell about Cobb County schools. So, welcome, Mayor. Thank you. The next, even though we have quite a few speakers, Mr. Doyle, the chair's going to make a ruling that I'd like to allow three minutes, but if I can, could the next speaker be standing behind the current speaker so that we can move him along? I'm a firm believer that everybody should have ample time and should be heard, but we don't want to be here till midnight. Otherwise, we'll cut the speaking down to one minute, and we don't want to do that. We want to hear everybody. So, if that's a fair deal, if you would, if we could, as one is speak, as one individual's speaking, the other one can be six, eight feet behind if we would. Is that okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, you're up.
We have 14 speakers, and as you say, I'll try to call the name of the next speaker as well, and we can keep the clock running as soon as the preceding speaker stops, if that's okay. Our first speaker tonight, Mr. Chair, is Jody Canaria, who will discuss North Cobb Theater Funds, followed by Haley McQuade.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. My name is Jody Canaria, and I live in Smyrna. My older daughter just started at the dual-language program at Smyrna Elementary, and both my children will one day attend Campbell Middle and Campbell High School. We love our school, we love our community. I'm here tonight, though, to voice my opposition to the additional $3 million allotted for the renovations for North Cobb Auditorium. I support our board member Susan Thayer's vote in opposition, as well as David Banks. I hope this item can be put back on the agenda at the next meeting, allowing for full transparency, appropriate process, and for the board to vote again. For those that voted in favor, if you do have a chance to vote again, I hope you'll reconsider your vote. It seems troubling that this $3 million has appeared out of a budget that is said to be 6% short. Please let's ensure that the current needed projects that are slated to receive the money are able to do so instead of allowing for $3 million elsewhere. We really need to keep the people's trust in SPOS and in its budget decisions. Thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Our next speaker is Haley McQuade, who will be followed by Michelle Murphy, and Ms. McQuade will discuss North Cobb Theater Funds.
Hi, good evening. Haley McQuade, I am a parent at Smyrna Elementary. I have two boys there, second grade, and a kindergartner in the dual immersion program as well, and I am the co-president of the PTA. I am speaking about the North Cobb Auditorium as well. I would like to express my concerns about the transparency of the decision to add the $3 million to SPOS IV for the North Cobb Auditorium. We are already in a shortfall in SPOS IV, and by adding this $3 million, this will result in a shortfall of SPOS V. I feel this is not a responsible decision that has been made when we know that other schools in Cobb were allocated money for the needed projects. This is a trust issue. We cannot afford to lose the trust of our residents, who are voters, who will or will not vote for SPOS in November. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michelle Murphy, who will discuss SPOS and North Cobb, followed by Joe Claire Mitchell.
My name's Michelle Murphy. I am here on behalf as co-chair for the Smyrna Vision Education Work Group, which is a recently established citizen initiative. We're very passionate about our community and our schools and changing the perceptions. In moving forward, we want to work with the school board, but we want to feel like we can trust that you will do things in an ethical manner, such as deciding how the SPOS funds will be used. We do have many projects in the South Cobb area that are being delayed because of the shortfall, so we would like for you to reconsider the $3 million to expand a theater that services an area that doesn't benefit all of Cobb County. Again, we want to maintain the trust. Moving forward, the South Cobb area barely passed for SPOS IV, and we want to work hard to convince our voters that it's imperative that we have SPOS V. And if we can't gain their trust, that leaves a big hill for us to climb. So, please reconsider, and for those who voted in favor of it, think about the ethical process and the trust that we need to gain from our voters in this area. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joe Claire Mitchell, who will discuss NC Theater, followed by Brian Clark.
Good evening. Excuse me, I'm going to cough. Does that count? I prepared for a minute, so I'm good. I will. I'll take off my heels, Miss Kenny taught me to wear. Yes, I just wanted to underscore some of the comments that they made earlier, that anything we spend now on this SPOS affects future spending and future projects on this SPOS, and then not only SPOS IV, but SPOS V. And I did want to throw in that my kids are at King Springs Elementary. I'm on the student council there, and we're splitting at the scenes. We have two campuses, and our teachers and faculty and students and parents are going back and forth between the two, and that puts a big tax on the families, the students, the amazing faculty and teachers, and also on our expenses. Two campuses is really expensive to maintain the logistics, as well as the Brown Elementary, which has old facility and not as efficient with some of the funding there. So, when we're making decisions today, again, I just want to emphasize those affect not only this current SPOS and projects on that, but future. And a little, since I have a minute and 40 seconds left, Cooper asked me the other day for a, my son, at King Springs, this is important, asked me to buy him a thermos, and he wanted a brand-new thermos. And we've got a lot of thermoses at the house, and we know some of them where the tops are to them, but I said no, and he'd recently seen the college fund money that we have for him, and he thought that's all the money in the world, we can spend it. And I said, no, the money that we spend today impacts what we can put in that fund for your future. And I think it's an important lesson for us as a committee that we really think about every penny we're spending, and families, we're doing that. Appreciate it if you do it, too. 55 seconds left. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brian Clark, who will discuss NC Theater, followed by Dr. Jeha Howard.
Good evening, Superintendent Ragsdale, Chairman Scamahorn, and members of the board. My name is Brian Clark. I live in Smyrna. I have two children, one that goes to King Springs Elementary, and one that just goes to Griffin as a sixth grader. I am here, too, to talk and discuss and just comment on the additional $3 million that will be going towards the North Cobb Theater. Sorry, I have it on my phone here, but concerned about the spirit of transparency, concerned that the amendment proposal for the $3 million addition was not introduced during the board's work session nor the FNT Committee. The Citizens' Oversight Committee also voted against this additional $3 million on Tuesday, September 15th. The redundancy, I believe there's a redundancy in having two district theaters that predominantly serve a limited area of the county, and obviously with the shortfall in the county revenue, SPOS is very, very important. This has obviously caused a delay in projects in and around the Cobb area, and we must be better stewards of the taxpayers' money. Obviously, trust is paramount for the next SPOS, as the previous speakers have said also. We don't want to lose the trust of our South Cobb voters, or all Cobb County voters. So, I ask you to please reconsider these $3 million, and hopefully it can go to a better use. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Take a point of personal privilege, since that's on your phone. I would love it if you would email that to me, your comments. You had great comments. Thank you. And your choice, I'm not, you know, whatever you want to do. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dr. Jeha Howard, who will discuss SPOS IV, followed by Connie Jackson.
Mr. Chairman, Superintendent, board members, happy to be here to speak to you, quite frankly and candidly, about the $3 million addition that was added to the proposal for the North Cobb Theater. I speak to you as a husband and a father of three kids, almost five, three and one, so they may be watching the stream. We'll know it's bath time, never mind. But I speak to you as a husband and as a father. I speak to you as a business owner in the Vinings area. I speak to you as a resident of Cobb County, Smyrna on my address, but unincorporated Cobb. We look forward to Nickerjack Elementary School. We look forward to Campbell Middle School. We look forward to Campbell High School. But I'm not really speaking on that platform right now. I could also speak on behalf of Wave of Excellence, a group of parents, 1,700 people on our Facebook group, but I'm not speaking on behalf of Wave of Excellence. I'm speaking as a man of faith and a man of God, and knowing that I'm speaking to people who believe trust matters. Sometimes we're called to be good stewards, and we want to be faithful over a few things so that we can be entrusted with more. And so, I ask that you really think about your conscience, and really think about something bigger than yourself and bigger than individual interests. Think about this entire county. Think about all the kids that need our help. So, I ask you that you become even better stewards over the little that we have so that we can be entrusted with more in the future. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Connie Jackson, who will discuss the calendar, followed by Joe Ellen Smith.
Good evening. I did bring handouts that I believe all of you have already been passed out, or Clem. There are two different handouts. They look very similar, because surprisingly, the results were very similar. After the last week's board meeting, I did go out and conduct surveys regarding the two calendar options that were offered, Calendar A and Calendar calendar options that were offered, Calendar A and Calendar B. I did survey my members, and then I also surveyed the public at large through social media and a couple of other avenues. And so you should have in front of you the two survey results. First, I'm going to go over the survey of my members. Do you all see that? The survey results—we surveyed—
Ms. Jackson, I'll give you your full time, but I've got two that's very similar. Which one—
They're both very similar.
Well, which one you want us to look at first?
The one that says, "The survey targeted the membership of the Cobb County Association of Educators." Look at the second paragraph—the second paragraph.
Oh, the membership?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So it says that it targeted the membership of Cobb County Association of Educators. Five hundred and eighty-five people completed the survey. If you look down, it says, "Out of that five hundred and eighty-five people that completed it, eighty-four percent picked Option B." I think that's very clear evidence of what the membership wanted. So eighty-four percent of the teachers and employees wanted Option B. Now, look at the other sheet of paper. This was the population in general, parents, non-parents, anybody could vote on this. Nine hundred and eighty-five people voted, so almost a thousand people voted, and out of that, seventy-five point fifty-four percent wanted Option B. So if we're looking at it, looking at employees and the public at large, it's overwhelming. People want Option B. This is right in line with what we saw a couple of years ago. And I did not give you the comments because some of them weren't really nice. I learned new curse words, and I didn't think that was possible. But what I saw overwhelmingly was, besides that they wanted Option B, was people wanted a longer calendar cycle. People are tired of a two-year calendar cycle. They feel that it is very jarring, very time-consuming, and it's very hard to plan. I saw over and over again in the comments, "Please lengthen the calendar cycle. Take it from a two-year calendar cycle to at least a five-year." You said I had extra time, and I'm holding you to it.
You do, Ms. Jackson. You know where I live.
I do. So really, I really would urge this board—and I understand why we went to a two-year cycle. And I do understand that another board coming in could get a crazy idea that the public would really be angry about and decide to change that calendar. But we've seen it in other counties. Other counties have five- and ten-year calendars, and they could have boards that come in and change it, too. But I think for the consistency and for the public and for the, you know, employees, it really needs to be a longer calendar cycle. We have to have that kind of consistency for people. Having to do this every two years is just kind of ridiculous. So I would like to urge the board, not only that we adopt Calendar B, because it's overwhelmingly what the people, what the employees want, and I would hate to think that this board would not honor the wishes of your constituents and your employees, but also that the board consider moving from a two-year calendar cycle to at least a five-year calendar cycle. And I would urge you to really, really think hard on that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Our next speaker is Joe Ellen Smith, who will discuss North Cobb High School, followed by James Nobles.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm a member of the FNT SPOLOST Oversight Committee. At our last meeting, a resolution, which was planned and typed up in advance by just a couple of members, was then presented to the entire committee for a vote. Not only do I disagree with the manner in which this was done, I also disagree with the content. The premise of the resolution is this: If the scope of the North Cobb High School Theater Project increases by just a comparatively minuscule amount, then it will jeopardize the funding of other projects. In its history, the FNT Committee has often expanded the scope of other projects and by far greater amounts. Without any resolutions or complaints, I bring to your attention Walton High School. The scope of that project increased by eighteen million dollars, and the FNT Committee approved the increase without any resolutions or fanfare. In addition, there is a state-of-the-art performance facility at Lassiter High School that is considered a regional community facility. The goal of the North Cobb Auditorium is to be regional as well. And contrary to some comments, these two schools are not too close together for them to both have regional facilities. I assure you that with traffic, it takes close to an hour each way. I know because I drive it multiple times a week. And speaking of Lassiter, by the way, that's another school that had probably three times the amount of expansion than this project, and it was approved during a recession without any kind of resolution or fanfare. This resolution goes on to request that the school board reverse its decision to expand the North Cobb Theater. Well, a former board member put it best when he said, "The FNT Committee's function is strictly to review projects. It has no authority. It is simply an oversight committee." In fact, multiple projects have been approved for expansion by the school board without ever, ever needing to come back before the FNT Committee. So I am left asking, why now and why this particular project? And why this relatively small amount, especially when tens of millions of dollars were added to other projects? I urge the board to take these points into consideration when discussing the resolution. In addition, I respectfully request that the board consider filming the meetings of the FNT Committee in the future to provide total transparency of that committee for the benefit of the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is James Nobles, who will discuss the North Cobb Theater. And after him, I'm going to slide his honor all the way down so he can finish. We'll have Dr. Davis.
Good evening. Unlike most of the people in here, I have the rare distinction of being directly impacted by decisions that you guys make in two separate districts. I own a home in the South Cobb High School District, but my sons have been in the Campbell High School District. They attended King Springs, Griffin Middle School, and Campbell High School. As was stated previously, we were told at a meeting about a month ago that SPOLOST was approximately six percent behind budget, but we found out later on that there was an additional three million that was proposed for a project in North Cobb. Our question is—and my question and what I'm trying to understand is if we're six percent behind budget, where does three million dollars come from? If we've been told that we're six percent behind budget, where does three million dollars come from? I've spoken to parents in District Two—in both districts, I'm sorry, in the South Cobb District and the Campbell District, and we're all upset because we see—it is visual in our district, especially in South Cobb and Pebblebrook. We see, and we're being told that there's a limited amount of funds, but for different projects, you can find three million dollars. As I said, my sons attend Campbell High School. There was a statement regarding Walton—I mean, I'm sorry, Willa. Willa is currently undergoing construction. From the best data that I can find, it appears that the gym that they currently have was built around nineteen ninety-seven. I think that's correct, which would approximately make that about twenty years old, while Campbell High School, what is considered a new gym, is over thirty years old. And we're being told that that project has been pushed back until 2017, and we don't even have a concrete date on that. So what we're trying to understand is if there's a lack of funds, if we're behind, once again, where does the three million dollars come from? And as people have spoken, have stated previously—excuse me, I didn't have prepared remarks—being from the South Cobb part of town, I can tell you that there is a lack of trust in SPOLOST because we go to other parts of the county. We go to East Cobb, we go to other parts of the county, and we see SPOLOST in action. We see the results of SPOLOST. But we look around in our area, and we don't see that. So the mindset is, why continue to vote for something that doesn't benefit my children? So I— I would just like the board to please take into consideration that, as Ms. Thayer so eloquently stated previously, there are so many other projects to use this three million dollars. Just right off the top of my head, I remember there is a plumbing project for Griffin—I'm sorry—for Campbell Middle School. That project has not been completed yet. I think making sure that those kids have adequate plumbing is more important than adding three hundred and fifty seats to a stadium up in North Cobb. So I would ask you guys to please reconsider your decision for the three million dollar vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dr. A. Davis, who will discuss culturally-centered service, followed by Valerie Testman.
Good evening. I'm a new resident to Smyrna. I just moved here last week, actually, from Illinois.
Welcome.
Thank you. I am a mother and a grandmother, and actually a grandmother of a preschooler in Smyrna now. But I've been an arts and education provider for thirty years in around the Chicago area and around Urbana-Champaign of culturally responsive arts for pre-K through twelve students. And I've also been working with low-income African-American mothers. I do school programs, performances, workshops, residencies, community-based programs. I did postdoctoral work in supplementary Saturday schools, where I looked at Saturday schools in London and in Chicago as a source of enrichment for African-American communities, low-income African-American communities. Last year, I piloted the Community Saturday School in Urbana, which was a program for pre-K through high school students, but I also serviced the mothers of the younger students. It kind of organically formed a mother's circle, and so that led to me doing more work with parents. I participated in a few conferences in a parent practices group where the whole idea was to build parent capacity, especially of mothers. So I have been pursuing this work, arts-based work, with mothers as well as with children. So I would like to be thought of—I bought my cards. I don't know who I can give them to, but I would like—I'd like to be thought of as a community collaborator while I'm here in Smyrna, that I could be a resource to be looked to for culturally-centered—my master's is in curriculum instruction. My doctorate is in educational policy studies with a concentration in African-American studies. So I could be looked at as a resource for educators in the community, maybe come into the schools to do some consulting or some programming and/or work in the community as a programmer. So I thank you very much.
Thank you, and you may give them to Ms. LaRosa. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Valerie Testman, who will discuss mandatory school uniforms, followed by Anthony Testman.
Good evening. Hello. How is everyone this evening? I think this is my fourth time before you all. I gave you all a deliverable. There are a few documents in it. When you have the opportunity, please take some time to review it. First, allow me to say that the uniform dress code in and of itself is not the issue here. From my vantage point, it is the lack of transparency, selective implementation, evaluation, and enforcement of the mandatory uniform practice within only twenty-eight of our one hundred and fourteen schools. The origins of Cobb's uniform dress code are found in Board Administrative Rule JCDBR, Student Dress Code. The objective of that rule was and still is to encourage all students to observe a standard of grooming and dress consistent with the level of formality of the school situation. Its objective is not mandatory dress code uniformity with disciplinary sanctions for failure to comply. However, that is precisely what is manifesting in some of our schools in the South Cobb area. Allowing individual principals to punitively discipline and exclude any students from any academic, educational, extracurricular, athletic, or any other public school program or activity because of a violation of a mandatory uniform dress code, while that same student may not be in violation of the board's dress code based on Policy JBCDR, has great potential to create significant negative and unjustified outcomes for our students. I am seeing it personally. I saw a little girl yesterday have to change her entire outfit. I saw a little boy go to ISS because he didn't have a collar. In Cobb, the statistics will show the twenty-eight public schools enforcing a mandatory uniform dress code all serve an overwhelming majority of Black and/or Hispanic high-needs student populations. Therefore, in this district, the statistics will also show the majority of students affected by punitive discipline resulting from a noncompliance, uniform dress code will be a majority of Black and/or Hispanic students in this district. Please ask yourself three questions when evaluating the uniform dress code and discipline policies. The first one: Has the practice and its discipline resulted in any adverse impact on students of a particular race as compared to students of other races in this district? Two: Are the mandatory uniform dress codes and discipline policies necessary to meet an important educational goal? And three: Are there comparable effective alternative policies or practices that would meet the school's stated educational goal with less of a burden or adverse impact on this affected group? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Anthony Testman, who will discuss mandatory school uniforms, followed by Janina Logan.
Good evening, Superintendent, Board Chair, Board Members. Simply, again, our position is neither anti-uniform or pro-uniform. I honorably served in my country, lived abroad, so I'm well aware of the esprit de corps and pride that a uniform can exhibit. But these are our children. They're not soldiers. They're not OCS candidates. It was mentioned that the community agreed upon these uniform rules, and it was an all-inclusive stakeholder decision. If that were so, there wouldn't—there would be fewer infractions with positive reinforcement versus ejecting children out of the classroom for the color of their fabric. Our recent open records request dated August fifth, two thousand and fifteen, revealed that there were no existing databases at the district that kept a record of which schools had uniforms and which schools did not. In fact, the response was that the district would have to contact each and every school to find out that information. Also, Student Services had no evidence of when or where an official proposal was presented specifically for Tapp Middle School. On the part of the district, this is a clear absence of oversight, management, and governance over such rampant and rigid enforcement policies. Not only does this completely undermine Policy JCDBR, specifically Rule D, which I provided you also with a copy of, and I highlighted Rule D. Those are critical pieces in there. It undermines the people's trust and autonomy granted to these principals. The enforcement strategies have clearly been birthed by principals under the guise of the community. This also demonstrates to date that Tapp Middle School and possibly others are in direct violation of the Policy JCDBR-R, Student Dress Code, Rule D, and therefore have unenforceable standards within their school. It was also mentioned that uniforms reduce bullying, sneaker theft. There's no factual or statistical evidence that uniforms help either of those issues. Bullying is a self-confidence issue. Theft is a moral issue. Classism will always exist, and uniforms can't conceal that. Typically, theft occurs in—high-dollar theft occurs in high schools more so than middle and elementary. But ironically, there are no uniform policies in any of the high schools in Cobb County except South Cobb High. In summary, as a governing body of public servants entrusted to carry out the will and needs of the community and the district, we're asking that you place this on the agenda in the next board meeting. It is our intent that then this board will come together in a collaborative spirit to review the facts. One team, one goal, student success. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Janina Logan, who will discuss the South Cobb Schools in Campbell, followed by Mayor Tommy Aligood.
I was a little tardy coming in this evening, so actually, we're discussing the decision for this three million dollar North Cobb addition. I have four children who attend schools at Campbell High School. My daughter is a sophomore in the IB program. My sons are at Campbell Middle School. My last son—last—is at Teasley. So my position is slightly different. I text seventy parents that I know who are on fire about this situation, and I just want you to hear, because they can't be here—from them authentically. And also, on the back end of that, I'm a seventeen-year veteran teacher here in Georgia. This is my first year staying home, so to speak, with my kids. And I just have to say that integrity means a lot. People don't really remember what you say to them, but they definitely remember how you treat them. My students never remember what I said. Two plus two was always eight. Two plus two was always eight. It was never four. But they definitely remember the rub on the back, the truth, and I love you, the truth, and I'm coming to school tomorrow to see you, or you'll have a sub. So, that's kind of where we are in our area with the truth and the integrity here is shot. And I have to be authentic and tell you that we do not trust the board for how you vote. So, this is what your parents say in South Cobb. These are all high school parents. One parent, "Please don't spend new money until the old promises have been kept and met. Please abide by the CCSD process for project approval and ensure transparency at all times, not when convenient. Please do not bypass FNT Committee as done so here. We see you." We, with capital W and capital E, so you all have to figure that part out. "We're watching you. We elected you. We hold you accountable. We don't trust your decision-making. We elected you. We can unelect you." I don't know what that meant, but it's out here. So, a student texts me, and she said, "I spoke with your daughter, my daughter, today. Your daughter doesn't like it here at Campbell. There's a picture on the Wave of Excellence. I encourage you to go, and I want you to see why." And I'm moved to tears right now because we put 2,600 kids in a stadium for their first pep rally. 2,600 kids are elbow-to-elbow sweating, and they couldn't enjoy it. And here we stand, and we hear about 350 seats for a stadium? Seriously, where do your morals lie?
Thank you. And we have one speaker left.
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, I'd like to, before Mayor Oligood comes up, I'd like to take a point of personal privilege. To those speaking concerning North Cobb High School, I heard integrity, transparency, and trust, and all I'm going to say, thank you for keeping it on a professional level, very, very professional. Thank you for that. And the other thing is, I have a car. I will travel. I took this job 24/7, put together town hall, email me, give me a date, I'll be right there in the middle of all of you, okay? And we can have a good discussion, because some of us have ideas, okay? And last, I'll say, that man right there took an oath to uphold the law, state of Georgia and the U.S. Constitution. He's our parliamentarian and our county attorney. His job is not to represent us individually. His job is to make sure that we are transparent, ethical, and try to do the right thing. Having said that, I want to end on a very good, positive note. Mr. Doyle, turn it back over to you.
Our final speaker, Mr. Chairman, is Mayor Tommy Oligood, who will discuss Cobb community impact.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. Mr. Superintendent, it's an honor to be here tonight. I'm here in my role as a community leader for the Cobb Community Foundation. I am the director for the Cobb Community Foundation, and this year, we created a special grant, a special grant that was a partnership between Cobb County Government and the Cobb Community Foundation. And through this process, through this grant process, we look to create a grant that would touch every part of our community, that would impact all people in Cobb County. We were really fortunate as we put together the committee to make the choices for this grant. We were able to distribute $250,000 in our community. We had 29 different grant recipients, and those 29 grant recipients, again, represented every part of our county, and the 29 grant recipients touched over 103,000 people right here in Cobb County. It's an extraordinary impact grant story. And tonight, I want to let you hear about one of our star grant recipients. We have Rhonda Smith, who is Alive Ministries. She is the founder and director for Alive Ministries. We have Terry Floyd. She is the principal at Riverside Intermediate. These are our community impact grant partners and recipients of one of our grants. So, we're going to take just an opportunity to tell you something really special. I think you're going to be inspired and compelled at what public-private partnerships and investment that we have made through the Cobb Community Foundation in the children in Cobb County.
Good evening. My name is Rhonda Smith, and I'm with Alive Ministries. And our mission is to eliminate hunger for at-risk students so that they may have a greater opportunity to succeed in school. We do this by establishing food pantries inside schools to meet the needs of children and families within the schools. We currently partner with 19 Cobb County schools, and we serve approximately 250 families each month. By eliminating hunger for students, for Cobb County students, we're giving them the opportunity to rise above their circumstances. Grant funds were used to open up two new school partnerships, and I'd like to introduce Dr. Terry Floyd with Riverside Intermediate.
Thank you. It is my pleasure this evening to let you know how proud I am to be a South Cobb principal, a principal in the South Cobb area at Riverside Intermediate School, where I serve over 1,300 students and 150 staff members. And I just have to say that every day, we feed over 900 students breakfast and 1,300 students lunch. And as we get ready to go for a week's fall break, we're concerned about the hunger for some of our students. So, last evening, we had our first food pantry distribution sponsored by Alive Ministries. And what a blessing it is to know that about 40 families now and 75 families as we get completely rolled out will be getting 75 pounds of food once a month. So, I want to publicly thank two staff members from my school, Ann Qualiana and Megan Hinton, who spearheaded this and worked with Rhonda to make sure that our students and our community are served in this way. We know that we work really hard to raise the student achievement at our school every day. We do many heroic things, but I will tell you this, that we do know that it takes a lot of things other than just what goes on in the school building every day. So, when children come to school well-fed, we know that's going to impact our test scores and our student achievement in a great way. Thank you very much, and thank you to Mayor Oligood and to Rhonda Smith and Alive Ministries.
Thank you so much. And before you walk off, again, tell us about your enrollment last year and your enrollment this year, so let everybody know what the need is. Is it growing?
We are growing, and we're a second, third, fourth, and fifth grade school, which is a very unique situation in our district. So, we had a close to 1,200 last year of students and close to 1,300 this year. And we have about a 40% transancy rate, so any given day, that could go up or down. But what we find is our poverty level stays pretty high, and the depth of the poverty, when you have 95-plus percent of your students living below the poverty level, that brings numerous obstacles to the school, and financial poverty is just one of those. So, it does take the community, and we're just so grateful to have the community to support to mediate many of the obstacles. Thank you.
Mayor, would you like to close us out?
Yes, I would. Just wanted to make a comment that, something that's really, really important. You hear us talk a lot about partnerships, and you have many partners in education in every school. I know we're blessed as a, as a community. We have them up in the city of Acworth, many, many different partners. Partnerships create resources. Without those special kinds of partnerships, like this partnership here, there would not be the resources that, that go to help improve the quality of life of our children. So, again, thank you for the opportunity to come and share this story. Thank you for the great work that you're doing, and thanks to all of our teachers and principals and our leaders here in Cobb County. We're really blessed, really blessed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Well done. Hope it didn't cut in on your thunder very much. Next, we'll have a approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve? It's drafted. Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? I'm showing six, six and seven in favor and none opposed. Next, we have Board Business, Facilities and Technology Citizens Oversight Committee, and I have the honor to report that. The committee met on Monday, September 14, 2015, at Teasley Elementary School. We would like to thank Ms. Leslie Mansfield for hosting our meeting and taking the committee on a tour of the school. Mr. James Wilson with Education Planners presented an abbreviated version of the Classroom Utilization Study. There were no SPOSS agenda items for the committee to review this month. The following motion resolution was made by Kirk Johnston, seconded by Mr. Cummings, and strongly supported by Mr. John Crooks. The Facilities and Technology Citizen Committee Oversight Committee requests that the Cobb County Board of Education reverse its recent decision regarding the proposed theater at NCHS and build a standard 750-seat theater as opposed in the SPOSS 4 notebook. We believe that 750 seats is sufficient and that $3 million is better spent on other projects in SPOSS 4 listing. And this concludes my report. Ms. Thayer.
Thank you. I know that that's not on the agenda tonight, so I think we could make sure that that gets on our next agenda, and we can discuss it at that time.
We thank the board member for the consideration, and any further additions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Mr. Sweeney saw your hand first, Mr. Chastain second. All those in favor? I'm showing seven in favor, none against. And now, we come to the important part. Mr. Ragsdale.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'm going to ask Mr. John Adams to bring items requiring action after executive session for personnel.
Good evening, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's my pleasure to bring you the Human Resources Personnel Report for September 17, 2015. The administration recommends the approval of the identified employment actions of those individuals listed on the Personnel Action Report and as amended in the addendum and discussed in executive session. We have no principal-level or higher-position recommendation, so this concludes the Human Resources Personnel Report.
Okay. Mr. Sweeney.
Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation that we accept the superintendent's Personnel Action Report as presented.
Have a motion to approve. Mr. Wheeler, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Showing seven in favor, none against. Moving on to board agenda items, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Ragsdale, do you have anything further, or the staff? Okay, thank you. Moving on to board agenda items, we have our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Okay, Ms. Thayer, thank you. I need to look over this way more. Is there a second? Mr. Sweeney, thank you. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, consent? Showing seven in favor, none against? Let's see, I'm trying to catch up, Mr. Ragsdale, sorry. Okay. Next, we have our discussion agenda, and we have one to discuss.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the board, discussion agenda item number one is recommendation for the adoption of the 16, 17, 17, 18 school year calendars. As I presented at the last board meeting, work session last week, I believe that the process worked perfectly, and that process was, a draft calendar was created. It was slightly different. We took input, we heard a large amount of input, took feedback, I'm sure, and I know the board members received feedback as well. And it was my recommendation last week to move forward with option B, that is, the, our recommendation, staff recommendation, based on the feedback that we received. Another piece of feedback that was very concurrent throughout was the asking of, let's keep it consistent. Whatever we're going to do, let's, let's pick one and let's move forward with it. That being said, it's, there are many options that the board can take, one of which might be to approve a two-year calendar and this become the template, and then on a rolling basis, just make sure we have two calendars out there at all times, meaning you would approve the next year's calendar the next year. So, it would be an ongoing basis. If you heard, as you heard, Ms. Jackson indicate, there's nothing prohibiting, I wouldn't think unless Mr. Doyle says otherwise, of approving a five-year calendar. There's nothing to prohibit that. And when I say keeping, keeping this as a template, obviously, there's going to be a little bit of tweaks that would, that would happen, and that would be when you have the break in between semesters around Christmas and New Year's, when those days fall on, that's going to affect, you know, when, when that particular break is going to occur. And then, obviously, we're moving back to a Monday start date, so that's just going to be what it is. So, if we want to use this as a template, that's, that's pretty much the genesis of what would, would need to take place. So, at this point in time, that is our recommendation, is to go with option B, and we'd be happy, Mr. York, Dr. Huff, any of us would be willing to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ragsdale. I'd like to ask the parliamentarian, Mr. Doyle, so that we might expedite what I'm perceiving might happen. I'd like to see if we could have a quick discussion before a motion, so we, we could see if anybody is for one or the others. In other words, can I ask if somebody's for option A? If not, then we could move to a motion for option B, if there is no. Can I do that?
I would say technically, if there is no objection.
Thank you. If there is no objection, is there a board member that wants to advocate for option A? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion to accept the, with Mr. Ragsdale, is that appropriate? Do you hear no objections that we can proceed? Is there a motion to? Ms. Thayer.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept calendar option B, and that we have, we always maintain two years on our website of calendars, so that every year, another one is just automatically rotated up using the same formula.
Okay. And I want to make sure I understand that it's going to be a two-year approval, but each year, we'll approve the next two years.
No. What I was saying was, as one year drops, I'd like we approve two years. When the first, when this year drops off, well, no, we're approving the next two years, right? So, when one year drops off, we just automatically add another, so that there are always two years out there.
I was trying to say the same thing. So, we're affirming the next year with a approval of the following year.
We're approving two years right now, and then approving that as one of those years drops off, the same formula will be used.
I got you.
To just roll up another one.
That would be a perpetual.
Perpetual calendar, exactly.
Yeah. Thank you. I was looking for that. The motion has been, well, well, she's already made a motion, so let me do a second, and then we can get into, okay, is there a second? Mr. Banks, I saw you now. Is there a discussion? Mr. Ragsdale?
I just want to clarify. So, basically, the board needs to understand that we still, the board still has to approve the calendar.
Every year.
Every year. So, this time next year, the board will be approving 18, 19, and then the following year, the 19, 20. So, you're approving an additional year of calendar, two years out, every year.
Right.
Mr. Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rather than having to approve it, why not just have, since it's going to be a perpetual calendar, we would have to disapprove it?
Or, I like that, but I, I think I'd like to, where we not approve it, but maybe affirm, or something like that. Or, I don't know. Mr. Doyle, you help us. Save me.
Well, I just want to get clarity. That was not what Ms. Thayer's motion was, is that correct? Your motion was to really advise, it was to accept option A, and that that would be binding. Excuse me, option B. There we go. Option B. I'm not trying to slide one in. And... I'm not trying to slide one in. And then, really advisory in nature, to recommend that boards in the future give it the evergreen effect. I wouldn't use perpetual, that's a long time, but add one year each year going forward. And that's different than locking in an actual calendar for a long period of time. That was my interpretation, but if I'm wrong, please you all correct me.
I don't disagree with Mr. Banks, per se, but I also don't think it would be much of an effort for each year for us to do what Ms. Thayer suggested, to just go ahead and put it on a quick agenda item each year for the next year, as Mr. Ragsdale has said. Is that, and we can look at it again. Any other, I want to make, oh, Mr. Sweeney, thank you.
Yeah, and I mean, if you're going to go down this direction, I mean, and I just pulled up policy, just because one of the things that we did insert into the policy was a two-year calendar cycle. Specifically, it says the district's two-year school calendar shall be approved by the board on the recommendation of the superintendent. So if you're just doing this one year after another, I think you're still within that two-year threshold, but if there's ever a desire to go beyond that, you're going to have to adjust the policy.
Okay. Mr. Sweeney, since you reviewed the policy, do you see where we need to tweak it, even though it's within the two-year? Your opinion is as long as we're within the two-year, we can kind of dance the way we want to, if I could use that metaphor. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, the motion, as the chair understands it, is that for, we've made a motion to approve, and it's been seconded, option B calendar, to be on a two-year cycle, to be approved each year for the next year out. Okay. Seeing no further discussion.
Same formula.
Same formula slash format. Okay. Seeing no other, thank you, Mr. Wheeler, discussion, because I want to make sure it's perfectly clear. Seeing no other comments or discussions, all in favor, signifying. Okay, I'm showing six, all opposed. Mr. Sweeney opposed. Okay. And that is our only discussion item. Anything else that you need to add, Mr. Ragsdale? Okay. Next come is our board newsletter and our almost new assistant communications director.
Thank you so much, Chairman Scamahorn, board members, and Superintendent Ragsdale. I'm delighted to present to you the newest edition of the board newsletter. If you have any revisions, I'd love to have those by noon on Monday, and I'll be happy to make those changes and get it out that afternoon. Thank you so much.
That brings us, that brings us to our board member comments, and we'll start with Mr. Sweeney this, tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a really, a quick shout out to Wheeler High School and their recognition for their PTSA as being recognized as a national PTA school of excellence. And then, best wishes to both Walton and Wheeler, who are competing against one another in this football game this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Mr. Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This will take a few minutes. I do have a list. On September the 13th, the 2015 District 12 High School Honor Symphony performed at the Lester Concert Hall. What that means is that all the high schools in Cobb County had the honor, students participated in this orchestra, and it was directed by Lady Dr. Andrea Strauss, who lives in the Walton District, whose children also went to Walton. It was a great event. Also, I had the privilege and honor of attending Lester's High School 2015 Academic Letters Award Ceremony. And this is an annual event. And in the class of 2018, there were 72 awards made to that class. In the 2017, there were 97 awards, and in the 2016, there were 109 awards. And what these awards represent is that these students have achieved a GPA of 4.0 or higher back-to-back semesters. So they can't, you know, have one semester where they drop down below four, and then another semester they went up to four. They have to be back-to-back during a semester. Also, I want to say congratulations to the Lester High School's students who were named National Merit semifinalists, Luke Bentley, Nicholas LaPrende, Lacy Moss, Bailey Peacock, and Brian Wayne. These students were among 16,000 of the top scorers on the PSAT in October 2014. Also, at Pope High School, and do we have that video or that picture? Okay, we don't. There were five National Merit semifinalists, which are Colby Minier, John Myers, Ted Shang, Francisca Villegas, and Jay Han Alex Yu. And also, two students in high school and two in middle school were chosen to serve on the State Superintendent Student Advisory Council for 2015, 2016. There were 110 Georgia students selected from a pool of more than 1,500 students who These students are Austin Fabritos at Griffin Middle School, Hazan Goggins at Tapp Middle School, Connor Darling at Lester High School, and John Jordan Hillgrove High School. Also, I want to announce that Allen C. Pope High School will be having their Academic Letters Award Ceremony on October the 8th at 9:30 a.m. at the main gym. Also, this Friday, next Friday, October the 2nd, Pope High School will hold the 10th Annual Matt Hobby Football Game, as we take on Edouard High School at 7:30. Matt Hobby, who wore number 70 on the Pope football field, was diagnosed with Ewing sarcoma and died a few days following high school graduation in 2006. So this is an annual event that is a fundraiser for cancer treatment at Pope High School. And I also want to acknowledge the Jewish holidays that are coming up this week and next week. I don't know if I can pronounce this right, but it's Rashana, Hasanna begins on Sun.
Rashashana.
Rashashana.
Rashashana, okay. Begins on Sunday, September the 14th, and goes through the 16th. And Jim Kipper is doing the fall break. And, let's see. Also, at Spraberry, this past Friday, we had a ceremony for Skip Wells, who was the soldier that was killed in the, murdered in Chattanooga, the Marine Corporal. His mother had his clarinet, because he was in the band, and his mother also plays the clarinet, and so she marched and participated at the Spraberry Ceremony at halftime, and did play the clarinet. And also, they had a presentation made to her of over $600 for the foundation. And I also want to wish everybody a safe trip and a happy week next year, next week, when we're all out, everybody's out of school and time to refresh and reflect on the remainder of the year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Mr. Chastain, are you ready?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have a lot of remarks for tonight. I do want to thank everybody in the community who's come out and participated in what we do here. I'm always impressed with folks when they come out and speak, and for every person that does speak, there's at least a dozen that probably, they don't think to do it. So I want to thank you for community participation. I want to wish everybody a very, very happy break next week, the people that'll be off. I had mine last week, but anyway, I know how it goes. Got to get out the last few days of September before the fall gets here. With that comes homecomings at our various high schools coming up in the next couple of weeks. So I wish everybody well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And I want to jump over to Ms. Thayer and get you after, Mr. Morgan. Promise I won't forget you.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Morgan for dressing twinsy with me tonight. Not sure what that's about, but anyway. Yeah, that's it, right. That's it. And thank you, Mr. Banks, for all of your accolades for everyone. Also, I wanted to particularly thank our representative of the State School Superintendent's Advisory, Austin Fabritus from Griffin. And also from Griffin, Paul Harris, 7th grader, was named one of the Zaxby's Student Athletes of the Month. So we appreciate all that. Also, I wanted to thank everyone for their input on the calendar and for your understanding that sometimes on these things, you know, you can't please everyone, but majority can rule, and we listen to you, and we're doing the best we can on those things. So appreciate that. And also, join Mr. Chastain, thank people for coming out, and our community, that's what our community input is for, is to hear from our community, to express your thoughts, and we listen. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thayer. Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I would like to send kudos out to South Cobb High School. They allowed me to wear one of their shirts. I'm challenging my colleagues. Night meetings. Wear one of your school's shirts, show some.
You want us to be like you?
No, I don't look at it like that, Mr. Banks, but I'll talk to you about that. I'll finish this up. But, South Cobb High School, they provided me with the polo. I'm happy to be able to wear it. And one of the things I want to highlight about South Cobb High School is since the 2009, 2000, 2009, 2010 school year, they've had 13 Gates Millennium Scholars, and that's a very prestigious accolade. So I want to say congratulations again, thank them for providing this. Secondly, I also want to remind people, especially our population that we serve as special education, that we are having a meeting on September 28th at Dickerson, as we continue to, you know, revamp and reconfigure how we do special education. And finally, I want to say to the mayor, Mayor Alligood, Alive Ministries, Riverside, that's some great work, that's God's work, really, thank you for that in feeding families who otherwise might not have meals. So those conclude my comments, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Mr. Wheeler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to say that I had the honor and privilege last Friday to attend Hillgrove High School ROTC's 9/11 Remembrance Ceremony at the Flag Bowl. The Chief, Alan Harris, Commander Ron Honowski, and Principal Suttle, that was a great job. It was outstanding tribute. It was something to see. And in closing, I'd like to also recognize John Jardon from Hillgrove, on the chosen of the State Superintendent's Students Advisory Council. I think that's been mentioned before, but congratulations, that's a tremendous honor as well.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. I think this took longer than public comment, but, Mr. Ragsdale.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. First, I just want to say I echo Ms. Thayer's comments about the calendar process. I appreciate all of the feedback. I know I was not able to respond to everyone's email, but I read each one, and I think the process, as I alluded to during the meeting, it worked perfectly. We took the feedback and we structured a recommendation based on that feedback. And the feedback was not only parents, but employees as well. So I think it was just a very positive process, and like Ms. Thayer said, again, we're not going to be able to make everybody happy, but we took the feedback and the input, and we produced the outcome that was based upon that feedback and input. So I also want to say thanks to all of our teachers. You know, it's, like you said, we're about to have the break next week. I appreciate all the hard work that the teachers are putting in to get our students prepared. And as we go into the final stretch of the first semester, we've had a great start to the school year, very smooth start, and I appreciate all of the work from all of our team members. As I've said, regardless of what position you're playing on the team, if we're not given 110% in every position, we're not going to succeed, and we are succeeding. So I think, say thank you to all of our employees. And then, last and certainly not least, I want to echo again, this being Public Safety Appreciation Week, and the officers that we have, we have a tremendously professional staff of officers, post-certified officers, that I don't think any other school, district can compare to. They are the utmost professionals and keep our students and faculty safe, create a safe environment. Many of them have come out of law enforcement to join our force, and many of them also have come out of military service. So they just have a tremendous service attitude, and we appreciate the work, and we appreciate what you guys do for us each and every day. Thanks.
Okay, we'll make mine real quick. Mr. Banks and Mr. Ragsdale caught a couple of mine. Skip Wells, if you see somebody in uniform, be it the men and women in blue, the men and women in the military, please step up and say thank you. These are hard-working, blue-collar types. They don't make a lot of money. They have skills like teachers that can do other things, like teachers. We're all, we don't make what we're worth, but we do it for the love of children and country and serving our communities. So if you get an opportunity, you walk into a restaurant for lunch, and you see a man, men or women in blue, man or woman in blue, eating lunch, buy their lunch. Buy their lunch. Let them know what you really, how you really feel. And I too would like to thank them for their service. The other thing I would like, and I hope I don't jinx this in our sports programs, I know our children may not be angels, but seeing the sports issues on TV the last couple of months, not just pro, but college and high school, we have great children in Cobb County, from north, south, east to west, and they're being raised right. Do we have some minor problems occasionally? I'm sure we do. But it also contributes to GSHA and GFOA and the other sports officials, they keep a handle on it. Also, our men and women in blue are there to take care of things very quickly. We have great kids in this county. And then, I'd also like to address, in generally, our public speakers come and they want to be heard, and they are heard. And I just want to reemphasize that we on the board, we're not royalty. We're not kings and queens or whatever. We're your representatives, and we're up here, I believe, doing the best we can and doing the best we can for Cobb County. So, and then finally, I'll get off the mic, but I would too like to thank Mayor Alligood and our schools, because even though they were here representing Riverside, one, right? Two.
Intermediate.
Intermediate, thank you. But they are a representative of several schools that are feeding our hungry and are doing just yeoman's work, again, like the rest of us. We're working hard, we're trying to get by, we're trying to help each other. And thank them, if you go into a school, and let them know that they're doing good work. And I'll leave it at that, and without objection, we're adjourned. And I'll leave it at that, and without objection, we're adjourned.